Hello, Canyon City. We're glad to have you all here. The end of the summer, school starts tomorrow in our house, so it's pretty exciting times. Let's go ahead and call to order, and now we have roll call.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here, thank you so much. Let's all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any council member announcements? Councilmember Tracy.
Are we already there on the agenda? Yes. I just wanted to mention that the Community Advisory Group for the Cotter Superfund Site south of town, we're having our first in-person meeting in two and a half years, so it's almost a celebration for those of us involved. In fact, many of the community members on the Community Advisory Group, plus some of the regulators from the State Health Department and the EPA, and the site owner, some of those folks, are right now at Whitewater Bar &amp; Grill up on the hill enjoying supper. I was there for a few minutes. We do have a regular monthly meeting tomorrow night at 6:00, in person at the Abbey Event Center. It'll be a hybrid meeting, it's also going to be online. And then, I'll just mention briefly that we, the community members, put together a tour for Wednesday morning. It's a trolley tour of the Lincoln Park area to kind of drive through and show folks some of the areas impacted over the years by the contamination from the uranium mill. We are already putting together a waiting list because more than 40 people expressed interest in going on the tour, and the trolley doesn't hold 40 some people. So anyway, we're really pleased that there's a resurgence of community interest in the work that's being done, and we're about to reach a milestone in terms of where we are in the regulatory process, so we're excited to invite others to kind of tune in and see what's happening with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
And we do have a Vision Committee meeting this Wednesday at 5:00 here in council chambers.
Excellent. I would now like to turn some time over to Chief Schick and Commander Elliott, if you'd like. And it's an awesome opportunity to, we will be offering some amazing recognitions to some of our officers today.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Again, thank you for the open invite to have the opportunity to come up here and recognize our staff members when they serve excellence. That's our mantra, service excellence. And the two people that we're going to recognize tonight certainly exemplify that. I'd like to talk about CSO Cecilia Kaiser first. Cecilia, come on up. Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
So Ms. Kaiser is obviously one of our community service officers. You know, we routinely get complaints, code complaints, from residents, then they come in on phone calls, or they come in on see, click, fix. And our officers go out and investigate these complaints. And they go out and they investigate these complaints for various municipal code violations. In this particular case, it affected a senior citizen who was handicapped and literally unable to accommodate the city's code, to complete the labor necessary to bring her yard into compliance with weed refuse and related ordinances. So seeing this as an impediment to service excellence, Cecilia took it upon herself to coordinate and establish a program with our Police Department Chaplain Sean Mayer, and in cooperation with the municipal court and her CSO team members, they were able to find a host of volunteers to help address some of these issues. As a result, the individuals were able, as a result, individuals who are unable to maintain their properties and who might otherwise have been subject to legal consequences, such as a citation, property liens, or abatement costs, they're able to receive the help they need without having to go to court. So Cecilia has been instrumental in getting this done. Additionally, creative solutions helps neighbors and community to large by cleaning up unsightly properties, improving neighborhood safety, and building solid community relationships. I think we have some before and after photos. Tim, do we have those?
They should be in the packets.
Yeah, they're in our packets.
Okay, so you're seeing those? Okay. So I would ask that you join me in congratulating CSO Kaiser for doing one heck of a job, working with our community and helping those in need. Come on up, she's... There you go. And in recognition, Cecilia is going to be awarded the Chief's Commendation. Absolutely. Woo-hoo! All right. Should we stand up? Guess we're going down. I think that would work, you know that? That's right. Do we do work? Is it good? Guess we're coming down. Congratulations. We had him, we had him. She's like, they're gonna make you. Good team again. She's my buddy on the street. Well, not on my street, she's on my street last night. Not good for me.
Quiet, quiet, come here.
All right, take it up, guys. Take, take, take. Take, take, take.
Ready? Here we go. What did you?
I'm not standing. I hate this system. Very cool. Good job. She hasn't sent me a bet. And she would have reason to. All right. Take it up, guys. Take, take, take. Take, take, take.
Ready? Woo-hoo! Here we go.
Next, we want to recognize Kyle Hans. Officer Kyle Hans, at the time of this incident, recently promoted to Detective Kyle Hans. So on Sunday, June 24th, 2022, we had four vehicles stolen from Lenders Auto in Canyon City. The four vehicles totaled about $228,000 in terms of retail value. Officer Kyle Hans, again, recently promoted to detective. You know, I was talking with Mr. Lender, and I'm gonna have him come up and make some comments here, some brief comments here shortly, but I was telling him, this is the type of crime you can't afford to sit and wait. These crimes are time-sensitive, and if you want these kind of results, you have to be willing to leave the comforts of your home and your family and go out and put service above all else. And that's exactly what Kyle did in this case. Kyle spent the better part of two days away from home and collaborating with Pueblo Police Department and other entities. And working with those individuals, Detective Hans was successful in apprehending two suspects in this case. One individual was wanted on 11 different warrants for crimes ranging from traffic offenses to attempted homicide. The individual, this same individual rammed Pueblo Police Department officers in their vehicle and was attempting to flee when Detective Hans put himself at risk and placed his vehicle in the path of the suspect's vehicle and pinned him to a brick wall, keeping him from further eluding officers. While this caused some damage to department vehicle, it prevented the escape of a dangerous suspect without causing injury or further risk to the public. You have some scene photos in your packet. All four stolen vehicles in this case were recovered. Three individuals were arrested in association with this case. This is not the first major auto theft crime Detective Hans has successfully investigated and prosecuted. Detective Hans has consistently displayed a drive to succeed and an incredibly positive attitude in all of his endeavors. His efforts always go above and beyond, and accordingly, ask you in joining me in recognizing this service excellence and presenting Detective Hans with the Chief's Commendation. Now, before we come down for photos, I want to, after presenting Officer Hans with this commendation, I want to ask Mr. Lender to come on and tell you how this has impacted him and how he feels about it. Mr. Lender?
Thank you for having me. This was an event that is kind of heart-striking when it happens. I didn't know about it until Sunday morning, and we went down and looked at all the damage. Holes tore through my gates, my fences, four cars are stolen, broken door, things like that. And it was, it was a time in my life that I hadn't experienced for many years, and, but all I can do is thank the Canyon City Police, the Pueblo Police Department, they went together. And I think the thing that was the neatest thing to me, I have a friend that called me and he said, "Steve, I'll do everything I can to get your cars back." And you know, words can be words and this and that, but with everybody's help, I had all four cars at least gathered up in 48 hours. Now, how many times would that happen? And that was unbelievable, and they stick their neck out every day, you know, to help people, and I just can't say enough about Canyon City's Police Department right now. Thank you.
I'd like to invite Kyle's dad to come up for a photo as well. I think, you know, we got a proud papa out there that needs to have a picture with his upstanding off, or now Detective Hans.
It's over.
Like a wide angle, first stand here.
I have to speak close, Marty.
Nice job, Dad.
Always happy.
Congratulations, Mr. Lender. Don't think that wasn't Lender, can you try to keep it as forward?
Good job. As much as possible.
Turn sideways.
Perfect, that works. Thank you, here we go. Let's have a chance with just the family, okay?
Hey, congratulations. Thank you. Thanks, buddy. Thanks, buddy. Yeah, get in there. Gone it, guys. Oh gosh, you don't want me in the background, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and all three commanders that are here tonight as well, and our CCBD and our community service officers, thank you for all you do. We share a proud and grateful for each and every one of you. Let's turn our time now over to the consent agenda. Ryan, that's you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 7A is to approve the minutes for August 1st, the regular city council meeting, August 3rd, the general government meeting, and July 25th, the special meeting for the Energy Committee. 7B is to ratify the city administrator's signature for a professional services agreement with Columbia Limited. 7C authorizes the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement for the November 8th general election. 7D authorizes the mayor to sign a water service contract for 211 McKenzie Avenue for CDOT. 7E is to receive and file a list, or receive and file the monthly budget, and 7F is to receive and file the list of bills.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Looks like we have Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks. I do have questions in regard to 7C and 7F. Should I do both right now?
Go for it.
Okay. 7C, in regard to the intergovernmental agreement regarding the general election and the city's participation in that, on the first page of the IGA, number 6 at the bottom, I just wondered, City Administrator Stevens, if you could say a little bit more about how that comment process is handled? Is that, do we get pro and con comments on the ballot issues, and then do they go into a blue book, so to speak, for the local election?
Actually, I'll turn this over to our city clerk, who does most of the election stuff.
And actually, the only part we do is turn it over to the county, and then they take care of putting it in the places that it needs to go. So I really couldn't speak very clearly on that, besides that we have to take our part, we have to have it translated into Spanish. We will give them both to the county, and then they take it from there.
I just wondered, in terms of 6, though, whether there's a process that the city has to oversee in terms of soliciting comments, both pro and con, on the ballot issues? I don't know what the law requires, but I just wondered if we do that.
I might be able to answer that question. So what would happen, and we don't, the city doesn't have a Tabor question, so it wouldn't happen at this election, but if it did, Cindy would get statements come in, presumably, and she would work with our office to summarize those statements in as neutral a fashion as possible, right? It can be a little challenging, but yeah, so that's the process, and then we would submit them to the county clerk.
And so we don't need to do that, then, in regard to these charter, proposed charter amendments?
No, so that's only for Tabor notices.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
She hasn't had that wonderful experience yet.
Ah, yeah.
I'm okay, but I don't have to ever.
It'll happen. And should I go to my other question, then? On 7F, I just have a question, I think for City Administrator Stevens, regarding the P-card purchases, whether, I just couldn't remember a couple of things. Do we have a limit by policy that staff are not supposed to charge over a certain dollar limit on a P-card? And then my other question is kind of related, and that is, do we get charged credit card processing fees, which are usually percentages and so on, a high dollar amount that can be quite a large fee? So I just wanted to hear more about that.
Yeah, the credit card processing fees actually are charged on the merchant side, not on the city's side for using the cards.
Okay, unless they pass it on.
Yeah, and then as far as purchasing policy, you know, there's the $6,500 limit unless, you know, it's been approved previously through council action, and then, you know, depending on the department and what their budget is, you know, we have various credit card limits or purchasing card limits based on the particular department and who has authorization to purchase. So, you know, during busy times during the summer, you know, we'll raise some limits for the streets department, for example, because they have more purchases during that timeframe.
Thanks. And so, is the city, I know, my vague understanding is that it used to be illegal or something to, for a merchant to pass along the cost of what they're paying in the credit card fee. Does that, do those get passed along at all to the city? Sometimes, I'm seeing now that merchants sometimes do try to charge the customer with that additional fee, and I wonder if that impacted the city at all.
We have not seen that on our purchases that I'm aware of.
Thanks.
Councilmember Worthington?
I just had a question. Is there a formal or informal policy as far as buying as much local as possible? Because I did see, you know, I have to admit, I'm a big fan of Amazon, but I did see Amazon on here also, and I was just curious if we try to buy as much locally as possible?
We do. We try and buy as local as possible, but also doing some of those, you know, making sure that we're spending tax dollars efficiently, sometimes the lower price, and we do have a local preference of 10%. So even if the price is higher, as long as it's within that 10% threshold, we would still buy that locally.
Okay, thank you.
Any other corrections or comments by city council? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. Has been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you. Ryan, can you please give us an administrator's report?
Yes, ma'am. You have the written report in front of you. There are some additions to that report. The demolition of the old K-Bob site is supposed to start later this week. That should start, we're hoping to see movement on that site on Wednesday. The plan review for the Loves Travel Plaza and the RV Park are both complete. We received stamped drawings today with the completed documents. Going back to demolition, we're expecting to start seeing demolition of the old Holiday Motel at 15th Street in the coming weeks as well. And then, we've been watching, you know, some of our, the bridge revenue coming in and starting to see things have tapered off over the last couple of months, so we are expecting that some of the revenue from the bridge will be coming in below budget. So we're monitoring that closely and making adjustments as needed.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just wondering if the RFP for the Urban Plaza at Clock Tower Plaza has been posted, and if so, if you could provide a little bit more information on that one?
It has not been posted yet. I've got, we're making some final tweaks and edits. Met with Patrick Mulready, the city planner, on Friday, and we are getting close, though, so hopefully within the next couple of weeks.
All right. Well, thank you, Ryan, we sure appreciate it. I'm gonna move on to item 9A. This is a second reading and adoption by title only of Ordinance 15, Series of 22. This is concerning amending the charter for chronic nuisances. Do you have any updates for us?
Yeah, it's not a charter amendment, it's just an ordinance changing city code.
Oh, okay, yeah. Thank you for the correction.
But it is a second reading, I don't have any additional public comments. Happy to answer any questions, and of course, we have Chief Schick and Commander Van Dyke here to help answer questions as well.
Do you have anything you would like to add, Chief Schick or Commander Van Dyke?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I think we're at a good spot. We've worked with Ms. Sellers, and we've went back through our policy manual and made some revisions to address some of the concerns that Councilwoman Schmisher had, and I think we're all on the same sheet of music in terms of continuity of ownership and making sure that we're not penalizing somebody on doing it.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Attorney Sellers and the Police Department and the CSO team for finalizing the policy and procedure manual. It's really clear from that, what the focus is and what the intent is. Just really appreciate all of the hard effort and work that went into that to make sure that the intent behind the ordinance is really clear to the CSO division in terms of trying to protect the community and the community spirit by being able to address chronic nuisances, but also protecting the community when there are changes in ownership and when there are, you know, unforeseen issues that people, people aren't able to deal with. So just really appreciate the hard work that's gone into the manual, and thank you for sharing it with us.
Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks. I thank staff and our attorney, also in regard to the draft policy. It's really helpful to see wherever that comes in the process. At the same time, I, just speaking for myself, I don't want to see us get into a habit of expecting to see policy before a new ordinance is passed, because it seems as if it might get the cart before the horse sometimes, and that we really need the ordinance first and then the policy. But again, I appreciate seeing this at any point, just to see the detail that that manual is written up with, and it's very helpful. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, I did have a comment on the policy, on the procedure, is that appropriate here in this meeting? Or?
If it's regarding the CSO Policy and Procedures Manual, then I would say probably outside of the meeting.
Outside the meeting's scope, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions or discussion, I'll turn the time over to Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve Ordinance 15, Series of 2022, on second reading.
Second. Second.
Has been a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for your work, and thank you both for your work in making this, fine tuning it all. We're now on item 9B, second reading and adoption by title only of Ordinance 16 of 2022, and this is referring the registered electors of the city for ballot questions concerning the charter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, this is a second reading, we've not received any additional public comments regarding the proposed changes, and I will leave it to council discussion to move forward.
If I may, Madam Mayor?
Absolutely.
I, so in Article 14, Section 1, so the public parks section, the addition there at the end that's capitalized, is missing a "B," shall be approved by ordinance of council. So the very last sentence of that.
Could you say where that is again?
Sure. So Article 14, Section 1, this is the one on public parks. So if you go to the very end of that paragraph, it's actually on the next page, we added language at the last meeting that starts with "provided the acquisition of any park or playground shall," and the "B" is missing, "be approved by ordinance..."
We've not received any additional public comments regarding the proposed changes, and I will leave it to council discussion to move forward.
If I may, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely.
I, so in Article 14, Section 1, so the public parks section, the addition there at the end that's capitalized, is missing a B, shall be approved by ordinance of council. So the very last sentence of that.
Could you say where that is again?
Sure. So Article 14, Section 1, this is the one on public parks. So if you go to the very end of that paragraph, it's actually on the next page, we added language at the last meeting that starts with "provided," the acquisition of any park or playground shall, and the B is missing, be approved by ordinance of council after a duly noticed public hearing. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually had a question for Attorney Sellers on the very same sentence. I'm wondering if we should have the word "provided" at the beginning of it. To me, it makes the sentence read a bit awkwardly, and I wanted to seek your guidance on that.
To eliminate it? I'm sorry, I kind of missed part of your comment.
Yes, to eliminate the word "provided."
Let me read really quickly. Yeah, we can do that. I don't think it changes the meaning, if you would prefer to read that way.
That's fine. I just think it reads a little awkwardly with it in, so would recommend deleting the word "provided" and then adding the word "B."
Councilmember Tracy.
The word "provided" occurs also on the previous page, fourth line up from the bottom, and maybe, I'd have to read through the whole paragraph again. It may fit with the wording of that larger context, or maybe both words, both "provided" words fit. I'd have to kind of reread, but I think when I first read it, it seemed to fit for the way it was written.
There's a third "provided," a couple lines above that.
There you go.
Well, yeah, but that "provided" is necessary, I think.
You're right. It's a little different.
Yeah. I think the difference for me is that both of the previous "provided"s are talking about all of the things that are still required to go before the electorate, whereas the last one doesn't seem to be referring back to a particular sentence or clause.
I feel like the first two "provided"s are necessary, but the final one, not so much.
We better get this right. It's the charter, right?
Well, I think we would need to make an amendment on the second reading when we make the motion.
Is there anything else we need to have in consideration for the second reading of this motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to, as long as Councilwoman Tracy has had sufficient time to read it again.
I'm sorry.
I didn't want to cut off your deliberation. I wasn't sure. Okay. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 16, series of 2022, with the following amendments. In article 14, section 1, the last sentence that has been added, striking the "provided" comma and adding the word "B" between "shall" and "approved," so that the last sentence reads, "The acquisition of any park or playground shall be approved by ordinance of council after a duly noticed public hearing."
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded with an amendment. I'd just like to say that this is part of the effort of the 150th anniversary of cleaning up our charter a little bit. There's still a lot of cleaning up to do, but most of these just get us into compliance with state statute, and particularly the one with the parks and playground, that's been something that's been difficult to help Canyon City really become a well-rounded community to live in with, especially for kiddos and open spaces, and this is opportunity to get over that obstacle. With that, is there any other further discussion? Call vote. Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
B. Smith.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
All right, it passes unanimously, and now it's in the hands of the people. And with that, it's time for item 10, and that's to go into executive session. Mayor Pro Tim.
I move that City Council enter into executive sessions for the following purposes. An executive session to hold a conference with the city's attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B regarding litigation, and an executive session to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B concerning options for providing electric power to the city. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote. Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
B. Smith.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.